Could I have a motion? Gary?
Statement first, but I'm always impressed by the number of community people who get involved in site councils. You can read through them and find all sorts of great people. But with that comment, I move we approve the 2019-2020 school site council's memberships and meeting dates as presented.
Second. Any other comments or any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Onto capital improvement plan with Linda Brewery.
I'm Linda Beer. I'm the Facilities Access Coordinator, and I'm standing in for Chris Eppson, Executive Director of Maintenance and Operations, who presented the capital improvement plan on the previous board meeting on May 14th for the fiscal year 2020. And I am here to ask that the BOE approve that capital improvement plan for Chris Eppson's presentation.
Are there any questions or comments on that? Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I make a motion we approve the capital improvement plan for USC 305.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Give him a call.
Yes. Long call.
Thank you.
Let him know.
Next on our agenda is Community Baseball and Softball Facilities with Dr. James Hardy.
Okay. Madam President and Board, this has been a topic for a little while in our district. Just looking back on it, we've had two work sessions and multiple discussions over the last couple of years. And I think we're at the point where USC 305 needs to affirm to the community and other entities are standing with this topic. And as you look in the narrative, you can see the different reasons why we feel like we need to be involved in this. So through the work of the Board and a little bit of input, we have a statement that says, "In the interests of the Salina Public Schools and the Salina community, USC 305 Board of Education supports the public-private partnership efforts to improve the city baseball and softball facilities, fields, and facilities, and looks forward to discussions with other interested parties towards that end." So it's recommended that you approve the statement of USC 305's support and interest in participating in the improvement of the city of Salinas baseball and softball fields and facilities.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comments? Motion?
Madam President, I move that we approve the statement of USC 305's support and interest in participating in the improvement of the city of Salinas baseball and softball fields and facilities.
Second.
Second.
Again, any comments or statements? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to discussion agenda, and that involves the Equity Council update with Dr. James Hardy.
Okay. Madam President, Board, it's an honor to be before you this evening to talk about Equity Council. And this is kind of a recognition and a milestone of our first year. I think it's also kind of a celebration that we're at the point, as a progressive school district, that we say we're progressive and student-centered, that we have this in place. And I really feel like this is kind of evidence of that. In your spot or your seat, you should have a copy of this handout right here that says Equity Council at the top. And it has a little more data and information for you as you look through and as I go over the topics here. The first thing I want to point out is that a collaborative group focused on leading and facilitating efforts to provide students and staff with equitable experiences. That is the definition of USC 305 Equity Council. The other thing I'd like to point out, when we talk about how we got here, I think it's very interesting and really, I almost think like it's the right way to do it, when we talk about how this effort started with student publication. You might remember that. There was a little bit of attention towards that. But really, that it did start with students, and it's going to affect and value our students. I almost think that's the way it's supposed to be. So of course, on September 22nd, 2017, the student newspaper came out, got a lot of attention, raised some concerns. And I think the thing that's powerful about that is that when that happened, as a school district, there's a lot of different ways we could have handled it. We could have minimized it. We could have shirked our responsibility. We could have just given lip service and kind of sweeping under the carpet. But instead, what we saw it as, we say, "This is an opportunity we can't miss." And at that moment in time, it was the right time, it seemed like, to have conversations about this topic and all the concerns. So during that time, Jennifer Bradford Vernon, Shanna Rector, and I, we met a few times, and we were talking about how we could address this and how we could give this topic justice and the time that it deserved. And so we all started doing research. Jennifer, on her efforts, she found that USC 501 in Topeka had just started an Equity Council. And so we did a little research, find out what they had, and we reached out to Dr. Burl New, and she is a Certified Human Resources and Equity Director. I think equity had just been added to her title. And so we had a conference call with Shanna and Jennifer and I, and she was just lovely. She gave a lot of information, talked to us, encouraged us, told us how they got to where they were. And it was really encouraging to us, saying, "Okay, I think we're making some good progress here and getting some good research." The next thing that happened, and I want to just really mention this because this is very powerful. In September, when that student publication brought up the topic of race and diversity and equity, we got a lot of phone calls. I got phone calls all that weekend and for several days afterwards. And it was interesting because the people that wanted to visit, it wasn't, they weren't being critical. It was really, really interesting. Whenever I got a call, I thought, "Okay, I better get myself ready for this." It wasn't that way at all. It was a lot of very caring people in our community who loved their school district, who loved their students, and they said they wanted to be a part of whatever we did. They want to help, they have ideas, and they would like to share. So during that period of time there, what I did was I took names and I wrote down phone numbers and contact information just to see if I could do something with that. So in November, by the time we got to November, we had started getting some conversations and setting some parameters and thoughts that we think we could do. And I called each of those people, and I asked them to bring a friend, and we had a meeting right here of those folks. And it was a very powerful meeting. We fed them, because you always feed them. We had a nice meal, and this room was full, and it was a very diverse group. It really represented Salina and our school district well, but it was community members. And I think the great thing about it was, we had an honest and open conversation. We asked tough questions, and we had courageous conversations, and people shared what their experiences were. And like I said, it wasn't about being critical, it was just about sharing and really expanding on how people have lived in our community and our school district for years. So out of that, what we got from that was that it was an affirmation that there was a lot to be done. The other thing that I got, that I really appreciated that, is that from that group, it says, "You're on the right track. You're doing what you said you were going to do. You're not sweeping under the carpet. You're facing this head-on." So we really appreciate that. It was very complimentary. So from the Steering Committee, we had three people that said they would like to be part of our effort to kind of get something going. And that was Rena Torres, if you know her, she's a wonderful lady in our community. She works for CAPS. Brian Frazier, who's the President of Salina NAACP. Dr. Barry Dundas, who was the pastor at that time of Trinity United Methodist Church, of course, and Jennifer and Shanna and I. So we started meeting. We thought, "Okay, what are we going to do? What are some things that we're talking about?" When in the midst of all that, we brought up the idea of what we'd learned from USC 501 Topeka already, and we went on a field trip. We talked to Dr. New, and she invited us to come and observe their Equity Council, see what it looked like. We got there plenty early, and we had lots of good time with her. So she showed us their documents, some books that they read, some different things that they did to get where they were to that point. So then we got to sit in their Equity Council. It was very interesting, just like we hoped it would be, a cross-section of the community. They had a board member who was on their Equity Council, just like we do. The superintendent led the meeting for the most part. And then when they got done, we had a chance to really visit. And it was really interesting to hear from them about their progress, maybe a few pitfalls or how they stubbed their toes a few times. The superintendent was very open about it. So it was really a good experience for us. So from that, we really felt like, "Okay, we're getting some real traction here, and we think we're going in a good direction." So then, that was almost like the easy part. You know, you think, "Wow, we're done." No, we're not. We're just starting the effort. So then the work really started. So the first thing we did, we used the Topeka Equity Council documents, and we studied them quite a bit. And they had quite a bit going for them. The other thing, and I just want to really thank you as a Board of Education, because this was still early on, and we were still kind of feeling our way through it, but as a Board of Education, you are really supportive of the Steering Committee's efforts. And I think that was good for morale at that point. So then the work continued from January through April. We met very regularly, trying to take their documents, using kind of as a base to get a starting point. And we used it to address what we were doing. Every district's unique, so we had things that we would fit with us. And so that was a good starting point. And then, March 27th, that was a big day for our school district, I believe, that is a Board of Education that you approved the Salina Public Schools Equity Council bylaws. That is a Board that you said, "This is important. This isn't just something we're going to do once in a while when we feel like it. This is a part of our school district, and we're going to make it a fabric in what we do." So I think that was very, very powerful. So we announced it. Jennifer did a great job of getting out to the public, through our social media and our other media. We sent out a note to our district that made it personal, to say, "This is what we're about," so people would know that it's coming. The other thing we did is, we announced that applications were being taken. We have, gosh, 37 members. Thirty-seven members of our committee, I apologize for not knowing the exact number all of a sudden. But we have 13 at-large positions. So we collected out in the community that we're taking applicants. And we thought, "Oh, my gosh, what if we don't get enough applicants? You know, what are we going to do?" Well, we had, I want to say around 35 applicants. So wow, it was great. It was actually, we had to work pretty hard to narrow it down so we could get a good cross-section of our community. So what a nice problem to have. So we confirmed Equity Council, and just so you know, we had students from each of the high schools. We have staff. Each of the attendance centers had representatives, and then our community members. And honestly, I don't think we worked very hard at it, but it was also nice, it was easy in some respects, that we had a diverse group in our community who wanted to be a part of this, and also our staff, and also our students. So we communicated to our membership that we're ready to get going and to come to our first training. And we set that date for July 12th, and this is what it looked like. We had a great group of folks. If you would have walked in that room, you would have go, "Wow, this is what Salina looks like. This is what your school district looks like." I think you would have been very proud of that. Shanna did a great job of leading circles, so everyone could get to know each other a little bit away, kind of break down some barriers, develop relationships, and make it for a really comfortable atmosphere. I think that was really critical, because the things that we were going to talk about, you know, it took a lot of trust. And here's the first thing we talked about. This is really interesting. When we talk about equity and we talk about diversity, we always, sometimes that word of equality comes up. And we want equality. We want everybody to have the same thing. Well, there's also equity, and this is the definition. So equality is everyone receives the same opportunities. And on the surface, that sounds pretty good, doesn't it? Everyone receives the same opportunities. But equity is each person receives opportunities that they need to be successful. And I am very thankful that we are in a school district, and most school districts in Kansas would say that, is that we do believe each person receives the opportunities they need to be successful. That's why we have summer schools. That's why we have after-school programs. That's why we have all these wonderful programs like Opportunity Now, like Project Search. We have all these great opportunities because we want to make sure no student is left out. That's just critical to us. So I would say that, on the surface, equality sounds good, but we're a district that believes in equity and equality, because it's just our practice. So here are some things I just want to affirm with you. These are a little bit of review, but that all students and staff have the right to belong to an education system that honors diversity and strives for equity for all members. That it's the responsibility of the school district, staff, and students to promote an environment where all members of USC 305 will save, honored, and included. And that USC, we love this last one right here, that USC 305, we hope it will serve as a role model for parents, patrons, and our community. And we've already got nice positives from our community that we're almost like setting the standard, I think, in a lot of respects. So the purpose of the council. The first one, I think, is really interesting. Lead the exploration and resolution of equity and diversity issues. In 2017, we had that issue. We didn't have anything in place. Now, if we have an issue that rises to the level of the district that cannot be handled with the buildings, through all our different ways of doing things, we have a ready-made council that can work on it. So we have a great council in place that can give us feedback and be an important part of that. The other thing is that we think the council's supposed to lead and promote a culture of inclusion for all stakeholders, that we have an entity in our district that this is important. This is their purpose. And then the last thing is make recommendations supporting an environment of respect, acceptance, and appreciation that leads to improved academic outcomes. And I think that last part is really important, because we're all about academic success. But we do know that if people feel supported, respected, accepted, and appreciated, that they care about school, they like school, and in the end, don't care more about their academics. So we had monthly meetings. We met on Thursdays at 5:30. Sometimes our meetings were an hour, because, you know, if you want people to come back, you can't have long meetings all the time. And then some of our meetings were work sessions, where they knew we were going to be there longer, and of course, again, we fed everybody. And we had really good work sessions. So these are what our meetings looked like over the course of the year. Of course, July was our first meeting. That was a long one to get everybody acclimated. And then we went through the year this way. This is what our meetings looked like. They weren't just sit and fetch it. Our folks did just not sit in seats and let us share with them. They were meetings where they expected to get involved and participate and share. That, I think that was the important part at the beginning, when Shanna did the circles, was to build that trust, and if people got to know each other a little bit, that we knew we could have those conversations. So you can see, we did put them to work. We shared a lot of data about the district. We can't assume that everybody knows how many schools we have, how many students we have, what our diversity is. So those are things that we shared. And again, you can see that we divided people up into groups, and they were supposed to go around and look at data, look at things that stood out to them, that kind of started questions for them. And especially, we did that on our surveys, and you can see that they did work. It wasn't just sitting. So the first-year goal. This is what we hope to be successful in our first year. The first thing is to lay foundation, but this is not a one-and-done. This is in the fabric of our school district. We want it to be important and purposeful, and that the Equity Council is here to stay. The second thing is building capacity of the council. If you're going to have certain kind of conversations, you have to have trust, and people have to be willing to speak up. And I think by building that capacity that we had in our council members, that we could have free conversations, we could be honest, we could share, we could even have courageous conversations, that sometimes people weren't always, you know, we'd always say things in the best way, but we asked for grace from all the members to give us to each other. So if somebody says something that might not be in the best way, that we assume positive intent that they're trying to do something correctly. And then also, that we wanted to establish a district goal for 2019-20. We thought that was critical. So here's what I did in the middle of all that. Remember, we sent out a note when we started Equity Council to all the staff members? I felt like one thing that was really important was to help our staff to appreciate it. So I went to each of our attendance centers and went to every one of our staff meetings, and I talked to our staff. And I kept thinking, "How am I going to make this meaningful to them?" So this is how I started my conversation, that I believe, sincerely believe, that every one of our staff members believes that each student should have a full and successful experience as members of the Salina Public Schools. So as I was saying that, they were all nodding their heads. I thought, "Well, that's the reaction I wanted." I was hoping they'd say that. And then I said, "That's what Equity Council's about." And so they got it. The Equity Council is about every single student having a full and successful experience in our school district. And one way to do that is to respect diversity, appreciate it, and believe in equity. So this, I think this really solidified it with our staff, that they could relate to it. So we did surveys. We decided to survey our staff, so we can see what they're thinking and find out where we are for a baseline for knowledge. So Equity Council created surveys, and we sent them out to the, it was a survey for middle school and high school students and staff. So they were done in January of 2019. And the great thing is that we had thousands of students and staff who participated in this perception survey. And the data was used, along with other input and information that we had, going all the way back to that community meeting, to help come up with our goal for 2019-20. And here's the goal. Foster a purposeful, supportive, and equitable school culture that values communication and building relationships between students, staff, families, and communities. And there's one really, really important word in there, even though I recognize it, "purposeful." The other part is relationships. That's what we found out from all of our data with students, especially students. The relationship piece was really important for them. You know that my teachers listen to me, that if I have a problem, my teachers will talk to me, that I have friends, that I have a support group in the school. So we felt like that was really critical. So that's why the piece in there about relationships is there. So here's what I would say. We are ready for the next step. We have a good foundation, good capacity for growth. We have a staff that wants to learn more about equity and diversity. And this came out on that survey. So the statement was something like this, "Equity and diversity and how they contribute to positive climate for students, for all students." We always use the word "all." And when you have 90.3% of your staff say they want to learn more, we feel like we have a mandate. So now we can do some training and things to help our staff to catch up on equity and diversity. The other thing we talked about, and I've talked to the high school principals about this numerous times, and they're, actually, they have enthusiasm for it, they see how this can work, is that we'll have a high school-level type Equity Council. Whatever they want to call it, whatever works for them. I've seen it called multicultural. I've seen it called lots of different things. But each of the buildings now has a way to facilitate within their building to celebrate the diversity and their equity. I would like to point out that if you go to our website, you can find a button for Equity Council. And on that part of our website, you can see all of our meetings notes, and you can see the different presentations we had. So if you want to look at the history and find out what we talked about, there's a lot more information there. And I guess what I'd like to do is finish by thanking people. When we had that citizens group, that was just so important. When they sat in this room, and they poured their hearts out, and they wore their hearts on their sleeve, and they talked about issues and concerns, it really was very powerful and very affirming. So I think that was really important, and those people helped us say we were in the right direction here. Also, our Steering Committee, they put in the hours and time to really help us get our start. That took a whole year to get where we wanted to be. And if you look at the members of the Equity Council, that is made up of students and staff and community members who all said they wanted to be a part of this. And then, of course, as a Board of Education, you know, early on, our Board might have been a little bit nervous about this. I'm not sure if you were. But one thing is that you believed in us and you supported us. So I think that had a lot to do with reason why we were successful, because we knew you were with us. Madam President, that is my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Next, we have school board reports and upcoming dates, and I don't see any upcoming dates listed. So we will have school board reports. Start with you, Carol.
Gee. Well, it's been a little quiet lately, but May was very busy. We had the series of graduations, and I think most of us participated in almost all of them. On May 16th, at Salina West, there were two graduations, one at 1:00 and one at 4:00. On the 19th, Central and South, of course, graduated. That was a great event, great speakers, by the way, this year. On May 24th, Emma and I attended the Salina Adult Education Council, and we took treats. And at that particular time, we had an opportunity to sit and visit with the members of the staff and get an idea of some of the issues that they face and their successes and so on. And it was a good time, and we always are so supportive of Kelly and her crew. They do a great job. And on May 30th, another of the graduations, because that was the one for Salina Education Group as well. So that was at Lakewood at 7:00. That's it, except for various other little officer meetings and so on.
Thank you, Emma.
Ditto to Carol. Thank you. Went to West 1:00 graduation, and then to South and Centrals and the Salina Adult Education Center. Kelly does a tremendous job out there with all of her staff, and it was really fun to break up into groups and to listen to the instructors and their pros and cons and things that they have happening and going on, and their success rates. It's really wonderful. So that was very good. And then the graduation at Lakewood on May 30th. And then I also went to the opening ceremony of Central Park for the disabled children and things. So we're excited to have that park here.
Great. Dave?
Lots of graduations and end-of-year stuff. Presented a You Make a Difference Award at Stewart.
Thank you. Anna?
I went to all the graduations except the Adult Education Center, which I was sorry to miss, but I was out of town. That's all.
Thank you. Jim?
Had all the graduations, and I guess one thing that just kind of sticks out to me, it seems like, you know, it's summer, and there's not many people here and stuff, but just having kids involved in the school system. The summer is still a busy time. And I was thinking how busy our staff still is during the summer. You know, I've got kids who are at school at 7:30 in the morning still for conditioning camps, coaches who are taking weekends to take kids to camps and things like that. So even though it's summer, there's still a lot going on in the school system. So just a moment of thanks for everybody for all they do.
Thank you, Jim. Gary?
Yes. I likewise attended all the graduations except for the Adult Education Center, like Ann. I was busy with work. I attended the Education Foundation meeting. We discussed the grant funding and where all the funding went this year, and if we had any left, and whether there would be adjustments, that sort of thing. But one thing we learned is that we will be doing 305 Live again next year, I think, May 23rd, May 24th of 2020. So we've got that to look forward to. And Joe's Pet Project, who has always worked with us on our 305 Live project, they're playing at the River Festival three or four times. And on Sunday, they have a combined choir with them from Central and South, and combined horn section from Central and South. And they will be playing music at the River Festival from 305 Live. So we'll have some of our kids there playing rock and roll music with those guys, and that should be great fun for anybody who wants to go see that on Sunday. Joe's Pet Project will be playing other times, but it'll be just their music. Then Sunday, they're adding quite a number of our students. We also need to thank Eddie Creer for working with the choir students to get them coached up, because in the one or two days, the JPP guys will be here. They didn't have time to work, so Eddie is working with them really well. I also took part in the senior breakfast at Salina Central. They've asked me a couple of times to participate in that. I've asked the rest of us next year. It's great fun. And anybody who says kids these days don't know manners, I heard more pleases and thank yous and all that. The main course was biscuits and gravy, and I was the biscuit guy. So I had, you know, just wonderful kids. They came early to have their senior breakfast and watch their senior video before everybody else got to see it. And just a really fun event. And it was the seniors' last day, so it was really a meaningful event for them, and it was my pleasure to take part in that.
Thank you. I also went to all the graduations, diploma completion, graduation, graduation of both high schools, SAEC graduation. It's always nice to see the accomplishments of students, I think. Grins are big, and some are so excited, they don't even know where they are, what they're doing, I'm sure, the looks on their faces as they walk across the stage. But it certainly is a joy. I also went to Salina- I also went to Salina Education Foundation, and I have written down here 305 Live, and I knew if I got you first, that...
Sorry to steal your thunder.
Yeah. But that is an important little project for our school district, and, and Joe's Pet Project is always helpful doing that. I also went to Salina West to deliver treats and attended the faculty meeting there, and really enjoyed that. It's very casual, very meaningful, building up of, of the teachers and staff in just a short amount of time, and I, they all felt very good, so I, I really did enjoy that. And with that, we have the Superintendent Report.
Okay. Madam President, just like everyone else, I went to the different graduation events that we had. You know, I, I kind of seem such an affirmation, when you see the students walk across the stage, you feel, okay, we did a good job and the future is in good hands. Going to some of the unique ones, like Opportunity Now, wow, that was powerful. Just how we transform lives is just pretty impressive. I wish I could tell you all their stories, but they're so confidential, but it's just very affirming. And then Project Search, that was a neat event to see those students over the course this year, they had built up their resumes and had interesting experiences in the different interns at the hospital, and that was very affirming as well. I do want to point out, when Jim said, talked about the, this being a busy place, this building is a busy place, and the district is a busy place. I think a lot of it is, you know, we're working now to get ready for next year. So I sat in on a couple of the events, just in our building, when I get a chance, or I've noticed them, I guess I should say, but when I see them on our board. One that stuck out to me is, this room was full of food service directors from the whole area. And to sit in that for a little bit, I think my eyes were crossed within about a half hour. Those folks, with all the rules and regulations and all the things that change at any moment, it makes you really proud of the staff that we have in our food service department. Lane does a wonderful job, and she works under Lisa, and I know Lisa gives her good guidance, so we were very blessed to have that part there. There's one final thing I want to point out. When I went to Opportunity Now for their event, I met one of the nicest people I think I've ever run into, really humble, gracious person. His name is Peter Schutte, and he gave a presentation, like a little graduation speech to those students. At the moment in time, I didn't totally appreciate, but I noticed the students were listening so closely, intently, like there's some ton of a special bond there. And here's what I found out, him and his wife are like the grandparents for Opportunity Now. He has a very interesting background, and I'm going to read this to you, because our school district honored him as a volunteer. So here, I'm just going to read this to you. Says, "We recognize Master Sergeant Peter Schutte, retired, with a spotlight letter this month. Master Sergeant Schutte is a volunteer at Opportunity Now who has worked with students in the Model Rocket Lab, teaching how to make electromagnets and magnetic motors. A highly regarded and authoritative role model, he has delivered captivating and emotional presentations about both his military career and his personal life as a foster child. Master Sergeant Schutte helps on field trips and delivers the keynote address at the school's graduation this spring. Inspiring students and staff alike with his zeal, energy, and we are fortunate to have his commitment." I wish everyone could have heard his speech, just how he had those students in the palm of his hands, and how much those students enjoy him. Like I say, he's a very gracious, humble person, and when I saw Master Sergeant, before I went there, I thought, oh, this ought to be interesting. No, he has those kids in the palm of his hand. He is like that grandpa everybody wants. What a really nice gentleman. So I'm glad that we honored and recognized him. If you, and I suppose he'll be there next year, if you get a chance to be at Opportunity Now for anything, and you meet him, it's a real treat. That's all, Madam President.
Thank you. At this time, we are finished with our meeting portion, and we do have a work session, and our work session will start at 5:50 in the Schmidt Room. So we will have a brief, brief recess here and go to our work session. Thank you for being here.